The town board. I'll start again. Good evening and welcome to the town board of the town of Austin, work session for Tuesday, December seventh, twenty twenty one. Please rise and join me at the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice. Did somebody say the other way? Am I holding the flag the wrong direction? Okay, welcome. And we're gonna get started this evening with our work session. I have a few announcements to make. Today. Councilman Walter, I just want to let you know, we can hear you.
Yes, okay.
Okay, just to let you know. Okay. Yeah. So anyway, the earlier today, we had the opportunity to commemorate the eightieth anniversary of Pearl Harbor Day with the Centralized Committee of Organized War Veterans. We thank Michael G. O'Connor and all of the different groups that joined us this afternoon at noon. This has been for eighty years, I believe, the town and village have been hosting in front of the village hall. And we're grateful for Michael G. For helping us do so and to commemorate this horrific day that then led to a lot of lessons for all of us in our country. Today, the Community Equity Task Force also hosted the new Giving Tuesday, a day of learning about organ and tissue donation in this time of gratitude and giving. We hope everyone will be able to make a moment, to take a moment to learn about potential lifesaving gifts you may be able to give to help others. I hope you joined us online at some point today for conversations with experts and local residents whose lives and families have been impacted by treatments made possible by people just like you and me. One of the many issues that we understand for people of color and inequitable treatment regarding organ donation is that families quote, experience less complete discussions about the possibility of organ donation, something that I learned from Health Affairs blog. This often happens at end of life moments when emotions run high. There are many other issues that also make it harder for people of color to receive lifesaving organ transplants. But if you can take time now when it is not a crisis to make a decision to give the gift of life, and in fact, one life can save eight and also can help treat many more lives, it would certainly give hope to many families this holiday season. If you were not able to join us live, all of the events were recorded on the Austin Community Equity Task Force Facebook page. We hope the spirit of the day will move you to sign up to be a donor if you can. You can easily enroll online and more information and on online registration links will be forthcoming in a separate email and on our Facebook and Instagram profiles. Westchester County Executive George Latimer announced yesterday that he was preparing to declare a local state of emergency in response to the rising COVID nineteen case numbers and the emergence of the Omicron variant now in the New York metro area. And first case was announced today in Westchester County, I believe it was a thirteen year old. And in fact, as a result of that, he did, in fact, declare a state of emergency in the county of Westchester late this afternoon. This this state of emergency should be a signal to everyone in the county to remain vigilant and tighten up all of the protections that we have had in place to combat this pandemic since it began in March of twenty twenty. So remember to wear your masks, especially in indoor settings with unvaccinated individuals or in large crowds. Get vaccinated if you have not done so already or get your booster shot if it has been six months since you received your last dose of Merna vaccine or two months since you received Johnson and Johnson. As we learn more about this new variant, it can seem very concerning, but so far data has been indicating that being vaccinated does seem to help prevent severe infections. We are much better off than we were a year ago. But it's important to stay vigilant and do the tried and true things like masking and vaccination that have helped us all along. There are currently fifty-six active cases in Austin Village, thirteen in Austin Town, and sixteen in Briar Cliff Manor. But in some better news, seventy-five point two percent of those in the one oh five ten area code are fully vaccinated and seventy-six point six percent in one oh five six two area code are also fully vaccinated. It also is so impactful that children ages five and over can now get vaccinated. The Austin School has hosted a vaccination clinic today at OHS, but if you miss that event, you can sign your child up for a vaccine at Ovac headquarters on Clinton Avenue any Wednesday or Friday. Getting those kids vaccinated before the Christmas and New Year's holidays will be helpful in keeping those cases down. Speaking of the holiday season, if you are in a position to do so, please consider helping our neighbors in need by donating to one of the many organizations in Austin sponsoring holiday drives. The Baker Collier Christmas Cheer Fund is collecting donations for its hundred and sixth year of ensuring that everyone has something to eat on Christmas. You can donate online at the bakercollierchristmystheerfund.com. Two of our local businesses, Microscope Music and The Tasty Table, are hosting drop off boxes for the O Prime hat and glove drive now through December fifteenth. If you can, please donate. Microscope Music is also offering the opportunity for someone who would greatly benefit from music lessons but isn't able to pay for them right now to receive six months of music lessons for free. Submit their story by December thirty first at microscope music school dot com for a chance to win. Neighbors Link is collecting winter clothes for workers and toys for kids. The links to the wish lists were included in my supervisor's update last week and items can be brought to their Mount Kisco or Austin locations. The Austin Boat and Canoe Club Toy Drive has many participating locations this year, including Penny and Ting, Value Drugs, Fred's Auto Repair, Ovac, and many more. It is always so heartwarming to see the Austin community really come together during the holidays to make sure everyone has the opportunity to fully enjoy the many gifts of the holiday season. That's it for my announcements. Do my board colleagues have anything to add?
Thank you for mentioning the toy drive. It's a good, it's a good one. You can drop off also at Chillmark Wines and Spirits in Pleasantville Road. You can drop off at the post office. You could drop off at Ovac when you could bring your child to get your shot. You could drop off at Austin Fire Headquarters, New York State Senator Elijah Reicklin Melnick has a box in his office. The Briar Cliff Toy Shop also has a box and Shetter Mafia Club. Fred's Auto Repair, Mike Risco, the Elk Lodge has a box, Value Drugs, Bob's Army Navy. So it's a real community wide effort. And any of them are thrilled to take your toy donation and have your business as well. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. Anybody else?
Oh, one more thing. The toy pickup ends on the eighteen and it should be a new unwrapped play.
Thank you so much. So with that, we are going to get into the heart of our work session this evening. First up tonight, we have our Parks Foreman for a much looked forward to, anticipated departmental report. It has been a little while since Mario joined us last on Zoom, so I understand he has a few pictures to share, quite a few pictures. So I'm gonna turn it over to you, Mario, and I think with the good help of Victoria Caffarelli, who got very dizzy fixing the direction of many of these pictures, we'll be able to see all of the good work he's done over the last year and a quarter. Take it away.
Yes, good evening, everyone. How's it going? Well, first, thank you, Victoria. I know she was overwhelmed when she got all these pictures. I'm just gonna, is it gonna show individually or it's gonna go like the?
Yeah, I mean, either or I can show them as this, or I can also scroll through here and we can.
I mean, yeah, whatever's quicker. I mean, it's, it doesn't matter.
Okay, we'll go one by one. I think that's probably just easier to navigate. Tell me when to go next.
Well, this goes back to October of twenty twenty. We started at Ryder Park by the pond, the Friends of Ryder. We cleared invasives and created beds for them to do new plantings. And then.
Just for those who didn't pay attention, that's our, that's our Habitat Stewards group is what they're called.
Oh, I thought it was Friends of Ryder. Sorry, Habitat of Stewart. Yes, and then we finished it with, so we did all the plantings, the fencing, and then we came in and did the Sweet Pea, and that was it. There's just some trees we had down at one of the storms back in last November at Cedar Lane. This is more pine trees. Oh, well, yeah, that was fast. Yeah, we had like three or four. I mean, these trees over the years, they've been dying out more and more, so there's a couple more that next year I'm sure are gonna have to be taken down as well. The next picture is just part of our leaf cleaning, our gutters. All we do, all our pavilions. This was at the Sematary Cottage Bathroom. We just replaced the rotted wood there with new wood. That's the new wood there. And then we just did that work and then the contractor that was doing the work finished it. Well, this is my picture, but this is just a picture of us clearing snow with our snow blower on our skid steer at down at the waterfront. I think it's upside down.
Yeah, sorry, that's an upside out.
This is, um, we picked a day in the winter last, last winter to just go through and cut vines at the trails at Ryder Park with battery operated. You can see, I think that's Alvin one, battery operated, a little like hand saws, hand chainsaws, which worked really great until the battery dies. This was docked, that was at Cedar Lane Basketball Court for quite some years now. We had the floats, we finally got to it, we put new floats on it, which will be in the next picture. And then the plan was to get it into the water this year, but um, the whole piling part of it didn't go through, so maybe in the spring we'll be trying again. We now cleared the basketball court and now it's sitting in the parking lot at Cedar Lane. We have nowhere else to put it. This is just spring cleanup at one of the baseball fields at Ryder Park. We edged it, planted new grass. That's that. That's just another picture of it done. This, I did, is a batting cage in the lower tennis court. Over the winter, all the turf, all the turf got blown away, so we fixed it. I don't think I put an after picture, but yeah. So, but it's all nice and neat now. This is a book that one of the residents made. It shows, it was actually nice, she gave for us last winter. It was just a picture of all different areas of Ryder Park that they walked through and just take pictures. There was a little note, I don't know if I read it. This is just our boat ramp down at the waterfront before we clean it. All the sand that's there, and then we put, yeah, that was in the morning, and then we put our docks in. We try to do it early, like March, beginning of April, and then we just took them out last month. And then actually, if you look at the end of that last one, that's where we would put the other one we fixed, but like I said, the whole piling part of that did not go through this year. This was, we helped the highway department with their garage floor. All the prep work was done by the highway guys. We just went there to help with the finished poured concrete. This is, yeah, we did it in four sections because it was a pretty big project and we did the outside a little bit. This was, I didn't have another picture. This was the Free Book Library at Gerlach that we installed this, this past year. It now has the top part. This was a repair we made at Ryder Park because they kept breaking the, the glass or the plexiglass on the Free Book, Book Library. So now I know the waterfront was just damaged once again, so I'm gonna do the same thing. We actually put a mesh in between the plexiglass, which seemed to work. This is a spring cleanup on the middle field, which is now the Jeff Carter Field, just replacing a muddy area with some sod. Then we edged it out and then we add clay. This is just some of the illegal dumping we deal with. Someone dumped wood and some other in the back by that rock, some brush and then some furniture. This is a water meter at Ryder Park that we had to pump out and replace with the water apartment. That's just us pumping out the water, making repairs, shutting off and then making repairs. This is a chain we had to put up at Ryder Park because people were driving onto our fields. We now painted the poles yellow and then there's a chain with a pipe in the middle with reflectors on it. This was just a picture of a dead tree at Gerlach Park by the pavilion we had to take down. And that was it, just then. This is at Sparta Cemetery. We finally were able to just make a roadway, not a roadway, but like an area where we could easily get in. We were climbing the wall with ramps, which was very dangerous with the road being right there, so now we could easily access it from the back. These were signs we had to put up at Ryder Park, keep your dog on a leash, because we were having issues with people letting their dogs loose and people being afraid of getting attacked by dogs. This was, I didn't have an after picture. This was after the work was done at the Sematary Cottage, we had to just connect the gutters, the leaders to the existing pipes that were there. That's just another picture. Like I said, that's, you see that little black pipe in the back, that's what we connected to. This is just some fence repairs we had on some of our ballfields at Ryder Park or one ballfield. There is more work to be done hopefully next year and then possibly some new fencing. Yeah, that was all replaced this year. This is the Sematary Cottage, again with Victoria and Marco from the Highway Department. They were able to do a new sidewalk. It used to be a blue stone sidewalk. Then when I got to the little peak, I got into doing stamped concrete, so to make it look like stone. So we actually did it and it actually looks like flagstone, but it is all stamped concrete. Yes, with the green concrete. And then we added topsoil on the sides and planted grass. And that's the finish. This was just some ideas. It's a tabletop. It's actually all concrete that you make it look like wood, and then there's actually benches, which hopefully I would like to do some of the benches, especially when Sally Sulp were done, actually add some of the benches, make it look like wood. But it's all concrete. And yes, it'll be green concrete. These were the kayak racks we built. We built them out of metal because at the time, the price of wood was up because of COVID, so we saved quite a bit of money and made them at, we welded them at our shop and built them at our shop and then installed them down at the waterfront. Which, yeah, the slab. I did some, yeah, the slab, we also did stamped concrete down at the waterfront. We did a wood distress look just to change it up and make it look different than just regular concrete, and we used green concrete as well. We also made a dumpster area, so now our dumpster area is fenced in and it sits on a slab, which kind of hides everything and makes it more neater in that area. This is just a sign we took down and we had it repaired, and we also moved it this year and the Girl Scouts did some plantings there, which I didn't have an after picture, I apologize, but they did a good job and that's the area they planted on both sides of the sign, which they did very well. This was just some damage we had at the Cedar Lane Pavilion where we had to fix the lights and replace some outlets. This was just the cleaning of the bathrooms. They're pretty moldy and disgusting, so clean the outside and the inside in the beginning of the year. This is just the way we do the playground mulch. We rent the machine now, which saves a lot of time and actually just broadcast the mulch. Upside down picture. That's what Johnson waterfront. We're able to do each part in like three days where it always took us like over a week to do it with dump trucks and wheelbarrows. Now we just feed this machine and shoots it out. These are new signs we had for the boat ramp installed this year. Down at the waterfront. This is the lattice at the waterfront stage, which keeps getting broken. It happens, I'm sure it's, most of it's not done on purpose. People sit on the stage to kick their legs. We replaced the whole section of it this year. It broke again and we replaced outlets. So my next step for that lattice would be to do it in metal. So I'm working on some prices and maybe next year I might just do metal because like I said, we just replaced the whole, the whole back part of it and it's already broken. This is, you keep going. This is our damage we had at the, no, this is a repair we did at the waterfront. Boat ramp, we replaced a section of the block top, but later you'll see in other pictures, we had some damage due to storms, but this with the help of the highway, we were able to do a nice section right in front of the boat ramp. We did some patchwork. Yeah, this is the tennis court, which we started last year, the first step we did, which was clearing out all the cracks and stuff. We ran out of time, winter came, so now we did the second phase of it, which was three layers of membrane. Then there was two coats of resurfacing, which is that black color. That's all the two step resurfacer. Then we did the paint part of it. Those two coats of paint, two coats of blue and two coats of green, and we worked with this company Seal Master where they come with their equipment and one guy, he tells us what to do and we actually do all the work. So we actually did this with our guys. And we actually painted the lines after, and you will see there's white lines and yellow lines. One court has that one to the right has one pickleball and the other one has two. Which I could say is after we finished, they are being very heavily used, mostly for tennis, some pickleball. This was at Cedar Lane before they paved. We had to unclog some drains and, and some goalies we had. That's just us cleaning with the highway back wall, one of the basins out. That's them paving and then we had to come back and you see the edging. We planted grass and topsoil on the next couple pictures. Oh, maybe not.
Yeah, I don't think those pictures came through, sorry.
All right, yeah, all right, no, it's fine. But yeah, all the edges that we've done at Ryder Park when they paved and stuff, we just planted grass and added dirt to the sides. That was the next picture, the picture of a hinge that we had to replace. We had our bathroom stalls that are waterfront bathrooms broken quite a few times. The doors, and this is the main doors, which we actually just replaced the brackets with more heavy duty door brackets, so hopefully they last and they're not broken. For next year, bathrooms are now locked because they're winterized. This was some storm damage we had this summer. One of the, one of the, I think it was the second tropical storm we had where washed a lot of the clay off into the grass. Yeah, you can see all the clay that was washed into the grass that we had to push back into the, into the field. We actually have, yeah, there's the tool right there. It's a gas powered broom to help us, which helped. This is preparation for the nine eleven memorial where we plant mums. During pictures of the flagpole, we also moved the flagpole to that area, which was in the back. It's actually to the right of the nine eleven memorial now.
Yeah, I think it's there, it just might be out of order.
This is the Moga at Gerlach that got repaved. This is some patchwork we had to do because people were making holes to put volleyball nets up. We used the same company Seal Master. This is a surfacer we did and then the two coats of blue. We painted lines and then we did a couple areas in green. This is the millings at Ryder, the lower Ryder Park, the lower parking lot at Ryder Park by the ballfields. We started this because we had millings and now we will be continuing this and hopefully finishing tomorrow because they're gonna start milling Morningside. This is some, a tree that fell at the St. Augustine's Trail, which we maintain. Yeah, this is just some, well, yeah, the start of Sally Soul clearing some invasives and clearing some of the muck out of the, out of the trails. There'll be more pictures at the end, which we'll talk about. This is just more of the fence work that we had and hopefully there's some fence repairs that will need to be done. You can see the backstop up top. This is the Brightwood Field at Ryder. Hopefully this field, we could do some more repairs on it and then the other two fields hopefully will get new fencing. You can see where it's coming all separated. On the bottom there, it's all become separated. This is the Finch Field where hopefully we get new fencing. These posts are all starting to lean. This was all pictures of the, before we did the kayak racks. This was when we were prepared to slab for the stamped concrete, again, with the help of Marco and Victoria from the Highway Department. We're able to get this done. That's just us screening it. And then the stamping should be, yeah, and then you could see the wood grain, so we made it look like wood. That's the garbage pad that we talked about. There's friends repairs we had at the Spray Park. We had to get done. And then the cleaning of it, because it does get dirty, especially around the mulberry tree. Which we do clean like every other day, once it's open. This is plantings. We finally got to a Ryder Park, the plantings by the pavilion. Let me just, yeah. And then there should be pictures of, we did, yeah, the signs we did to keep people from throwing all the rocks we put down. And then we had them, the plants we put, they bloom, there's some that bloom in the spring, some in the summer and then some in the fall. This was the slab at the, for the garbage at the waterfront. You can see the flagpole in that other picture was in the back. We actually moved it now to by the nine eleven memorial. This was a leak we had at Ryder Park before the Finch Field, so what we did is we cut into that where the leak was and then they were asking for water for the habitat steward habitat at Ryder. So we actually added a line from that where that hole was to where the beds were now behind Finch Field by the pond, so they could water the plants. We use our saw cutter, so it was nice and neat after we put saw back down. So it looks like we're never there. And now they have water. This was the second storm we had, the tropical storm we had, we had some just some mud and stuff going to the women's room at the waterfront. And then this is some of the damage we had at the waterfront parking lot, which I should be having meeting, I think I'm meeting Paul tomorrow about this to get a price on fixing it the right way. There was a pretty deep sinkhole that happened. This was in front of the Boat and Canoe Club, just washed away the gravel around pump station. This was the dog park, all the overgrown weeds and invasives over the fence we cleared and then we added all new wood chips. This was just some tree work we had. We had five, I believe, four or five dead trees at the dog park that we finally got taken care of. Just pictures of dead trees. You guys should see the holes in those trees of how rotted it was. All right, Sally Swole. The start of this project, but with just going in there and clearing all the vines, invasives, down trees, or a lot of down trees. This is just some vines we're clearing, more vines, a lot more vines. This was just trees that were down. There was like a dozen, probably a dozen trees down when we started. It's just the base of one of them. Then because the trails were so wet, we put track pad down on all the trails. We, these were pipes that were there. There were three areas that had two sections of pipes to cross over as a bridge. As you can see, all the mud falling out of it, so we actually replaced them with perforated pipe to help the water flow through. This was last winter when we started the project. This is the area, yeah, pipes, yeah, those, that's one, those were perforated pipes that we replaced. This is just, you see down the center, just to help the water keep flowing because water just runs underneath the trails. So with the track pad, this is just one of the, where the machine is, that's a trail that comes down into where we added those pipes. And yeah, with the track pad and everything, after every rainstorm we've had so far, you can go there and it's paths are walkable. We actually just topped these paths with item four. Which you will hopefully see soon. It's about three thousand, these are mats we bought to help us deal with all the mud and muck. And we actually use these. We use that cemetery, the highways use them. We've used them on ballfields to drive the trucks over so we don't make a mess. It's just more track pad on the trails. Like I said, it's about three thousand feet of trails that were there that we just cleared and all the rotting wood chips, the decomposing wood that were there, and now they're just usable and walkable. We kind of well, yeah, we kind of gave up on that part for like ten years because every time we go there, it just, we'd make a mess, our machines would get stuck. And yeah, so now this is. Um, and yeah, so now this is what we did and it's just a hundred times better. All these boulders and stones, should see a pile somewhere. Um, these were all saved over the years. And there's our rock pile. This is uh, we've had them at Cedar Lane. So we're hauling all our, all the stone we used for borders to keep all the item four and stuff in the trails. Um, we've, we had and we did not buy, purchase any of them. We did purchase all the item four and the track pad, the one underneath. These are the finished trails. Um, those islands will be beds eventually. Um, this is just the process of, yeah, going through. Yeah, the stones on the side and the item four, the bridge was always there. Um, we just met, there's no lips anymore, so everything is ADA compliant. Um, yeah, and that's, those are what the trails are gonna look like. This is a rocks that we made to just help us move along. Some of the rocks were heavy. And uh, believe it or not, each stone was probably moved like five or six times to find the right face and. Set it properly, so we made this. We looked it up real quick. We did, we had scrap metal at the shop. We ran there one day and just. Put this together and it actually helped us a lot. And it's just more of the stone borders and then the uh item four on top for the trails. More trails. More trails. And that's, yeah. And this was the last part we just did this past weekend. Um, this is the Jeffrey Harder sign. We uh dedicated the middle field to him. We uh placed it on a stone. In front of, in, in back of the backstop at the middle field, which is now the Jeffrey Harder Field.
That was the end of.
That is it. Wasn't that bad?
They're good. You left out the um. Speed bumps.
Yeah, I realized that. Yes, we also put speed bumps at Ryder Park, um removable ones, which we will be taking out hopefully soon. In the next week or two before it snows.
And you also fixed up the dog park fencing, the dog park fencing at uh Ryder.
At Ryder, yes, we did some repairs there. We had a lot of friends repair, uh fence repairs this year. Um.
I think you also planted some trees for trips at Sally, at Sally's whoa, right?
Yes, we did that. Yes, we do a lot.
It was a busy year, very productive.
Yes, it always is. And then the rest of the time, hopefully Sally soap, um well, tomorrow we'll be doing the Millings. Um, we'll be back at Sally's soap Thursday. Um, thing is, like, it came April, Sally's soap, we had to let it go. We had. All our field maintenance, our spring cleanups and then our regular schedule came and. We just got back there, what, maybe last month? And we've been there, now we've been there, like. Settled, so hopefully the next step is to do the parking lot. Um, we just gotta clear, we're gonna, Thursday we'll be back there, we'll clear all the trails. Um, because we were running it over with the boogie, so we just gotta freshen them up and they're done. So that's, we're very happy about that because we do not want to touch another stone. But um, no, it, it's, it's coming along, so hopefully if the weather holds, we could finish the parking lot, um. And then we'll, we'll see. It'll be, I mean, the trails will be usable, but without a parking lot. It's kind of tough, but a lot of people that walk by, they're, I mean, they are using it not as frequently though, but. A lot of people are excited about, so hopefully the weather holds and you get a lot more done.
Well, it's a lot to be excited about. How much does three thousand feet of trails compare to, for example, like um. Chilmark Park or Richard Bushy Park?
I don't know.
You don't know?
I think it's under a mi, I think a miles, five, I gotta measure it again. It was like twenty-eight, I believe. I'll measure it again at the end because we also want to count how many stones we put in.
And you're not gonna use any more stones for the to.
Yes, the parking lot, we're gonna use some more bigger boulders and then we had some. Stone borders taken out of the entrance of Ryder Park and some along morningside that I saved. And I had um the guys that were doing the curving save for me, so we're gonna use those towards the entrance of the road. And then, yeah, so we maybe have like, I don't know, ten more boulders to place in the parking lot. And then it'll be the stone curbing we did and then the parking lot, I, like, we agreed on, we're just gonna leave item four. We'll probably just pave the first ten feet coming off the road and then the rest will be item four. But it'll be a more coarse item four, I believe, because the, what we're using on the trails is a nine sixteen side import. Which will be more, it's a more ADA compliant as well, but I feel for the parking lot, we use something with bigger stone. And then, yeah, and then we'll take it from there.
It looks amazing. I, I don't know if any of the town board has had a chance to get out there recently, but um it really does look phenomenal. And um it sure has taken a, a long time coming, but um we appreciate all of. The work that you and your, your team and some uh other teams have helped with. And um it's really quite an accomplishment, so thanks for the year plus in review. Um, I'm just gonna open it up to my town board colleagues for any questions or comments.
Well, you know, I'm super excited about Sally's Hope Park. When, when can the people visit it? You figure next month?
I mean, there's people like, they, 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 they're like, the, after we say, oh, you go walk in, like, oh, I already walked it, you know? So a couple of people are going through it, but as long as we clean up the parking lot and get that somewhat done. I mean, otherwise, I mean, you could always keep the parking lot closed and maybe just let people go in, but. A lot of people right now, just people that walk from the development or they're walking their dogs or. Just people that are running by, whatever. Um, but like I said, hopefully.
Clearly demarcate the part that's not safe to be in, like the parking lot area with some things, then. People wouldn't wa- walk in that area. Maybe that would be helpful and then people could still access the paths, um. You know, if it's just walking, a walking entry.
Right, well, hopefully we got the parking lot cleared. If not by Friday, I mean, it all depends on how long the milling takes tomorrow. Hopefully we're just there one day. But by next week, we should have the po- parking lot cleared and, and I wouldn't say finished, but. We'll have it somewhat, somewhat ready.
And Dana, to answer your question, a mile is uh five thousand two hundred and eighty feet.
I think, I think, I want to say. Is a quarter, is about a quarter mile, so this is probably two times that, because I'm pretty.
It's a third of a mile, so.
Well, all the.
Three times around make a mile.
See, and I thought it was four times around. I've been walking like way more. Okay, good to know. So, yeah, that's great. That's really, it's really good because again, we, a lot of people like to run or walk, like, you know, knowing the distance, so it'll be helpful. Maybe we can even post what the uh total uh circuit would be and I think that it's really amazing that it is. ADA compliant also, um which it certainly wasn't before. And I think the other thing that um you mentioned to me before, Mario, was that you can um. And you mentioned at the beginning that you're gonna have much better ability to access to keep it clear. Um, and also it's gonna be a lot less wet, so it will be um. Usable, you know, kind of all year round, as long as um we're able to keep it clear.
Well, the one thing we is, we already talked about it, we, I don't think, I mean, unless. Obviously the town wants us to, but I don't think we'll be moving, clearing the snow from the trails. Because you take the snowboard on there, it's, it's item four. You'll, you're more likely to dig into it and just make more of a mess and then you just. Once you get into that, then ice buildup and stuff like that, so I don't think it'll be wise to clear the snow. People want to walk in the snow, just go ahead and walk, um, I don't know, but. Because it's not a paid service, I don't think we should worry about clearing snow, but. I guess we'll see when that time comes, unless we hand shovel it, but that's like.
A lot of hand shovel.
Yes.
It's a big job.
We'll see, we'll figure it out.
Okay. And Bella's gonna help with the shovel, apparently.
Well, I think Ryder Park looks great. I think you worked great in, in tandem with the uh volunteer group. I was, you know, Dana and I were both there. And it was a good collaboration.
Yes.
Um, I look forward to the parking lot down at the waterfront not being, you know, full of potholes someday. That's awesome. Um, and you know, the harder field is, you know, looking good, so, thank you.
Thank you.
The ten, the tennis courts, I've heard from uh people that they were quite amazed that we had an in-house crew. Do that work at the tennis courts. That was, that's a big deal. Most of the time, people just bring in outside crews to do those things and it's a lot more expensive, so. Um, I think the fact that we have a very talented crew um certainly helps save us money. It also sometimes means things take longer because they're doing everything and um we do have a small crew. Um, and just to give a shout out to all of them, Mario, um, you wanna shout them all out or do you want me to?
Big shout out to Mark Gallagher, Albin Zahas, Jose Castro and.
Alvin Sol, Solash, right?
And of course Larry. And we also had uh Brian this year. Um, and uh, Arnis.
Right. You already gave the shout out to the Highway Department for their help.
Yes.
And I know that you, you didn't mention the many um burials that you also um assisted with. Um, because we have a, a mixed crew now working at cemetery and the parks and. Um, you, you showed that little area of Sparta that you'd helped with and I know that um, I'm sure Pete will. Um, add that, you know, he appreciated all the help, especially during COVID when they needed more hands-on deck for uh burials and things of that nature. Um, I don't know, we had pictures, everybody in the dutes for a while. Um, we haven't seen that recently, but um we do. Know that everybody working together makes things go faster, but as also mentioned, um there's more responsibility and more, more territory to cover. So besides all the parks um that we showed, we also have um the two large cemeteries. So again, thanks. Um, I, I was, again, any, anybody else from the town board like to say anything?
Yes, um Mario. This one, I just wanted to tell you, I, I think you guys are doing a great job. I, I've ridden a road out and looked at some of the stuff and it's fantastic. Just, just keep on doing what you're doing.
Thank you.
Good? Everybody else good? Alright, again, thanks so much. Bella, do you want to say anything? I'm proud of your daddy.
Bye.
Bye. Have a, have a really great night and look forward to uh Sally's Hope walking walkable very, very soon.
Hopefully, alright, thank you. Happy holidays, everybody. If anyone sees you.
Alright, thanks so much. Um, next up. In anticipation of the adoption of the twenty twenty-two budget at our next legislative session. I'm going to turn it over to Victoria Cafarelli to share uh some of the changes that we made that we've already discussed. Uh, and also, um, hopefully they'll all be in the right direction this time. She didn't have to upload any pictures, I don't think. Um, we also have our recreation superintendent Bill Garrison and our cemetery superintendent. That had Pete Conley, who is uh zooming in from the, from Dale Cemetery. With us to discuss some of the proposed additional fees to be added to the fee schedule, which gets adopted, I believe at our reorg meeting, um. Right, but plus some changes to the current fee schedule that they're recommending for twenty twenty-two. And um I'll give it over to Victoria Cafarelli, our amazing budget director.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm just gonna share my screen quickly and uh share. So um the, all of these changes that have been made to the, um, from the tentative budget now to what is going to be the final budget. Have already been discussed at our, um, the work sessions that we had with our department heads, but just. Kind of summarizing for the board and the public here of what changes have actually been made. Um, we added a stipend uh to the building department line for um some additional code enforcement work that one of our employees will be. Taking on next year. Um, we also um increased the added title budget in the Highway Department because we were already close to at budget for. As, as of November, so we need to up that a little bit. Um, and then also something that was discussed. Um, sort of in theory, but we needed to adjust in terms of numbers. Um, was uh to have three seasonal employees in the Highway Department, one working in the spring. And two, working in leaf season next year. So um it was a couple of uh fairly minor changes here. Um, and all of them were adjusted on the revenue end, so there's been no change to the proposed uh tax rates that were, um, you know, published. With the tentative budget, so uh it's a pretty much net-net changes we were able to make. We did also make some additions to the capital plan that you see here in attachment for one of the parks department's equipment. Um, a leaf machine that the Highway Department had planned on actually purchasing in twenty twenty-one, but. Uh, sort of the, the stars didn't quite align in terms of the uh vendors that were available on state contract with the specifications that were needed, so. We're pushing that back to twenty twenty-two since leaf season is pretty much over by now. Um. We also received some uh budgetary numbers from uh Andy Tease, who's our water superintendent, but also works in uh sort of the building maintenance side of things. With the town and the village uh for some recommended numbers if the town does need to move forward with renovations to our offices on the third floor. Sixteen Croton and the senior center. So again, all of these items were discussed in those work sessions, um but sort of summarizing it here. Are there any questions about this or we can move into sort of the fees discussion, which are sort of budget adjacent?
Just would like to comment that leaf season is not over yet.
Leaf season, yeah.
Not even close to over and I'm sure that uh Pete Conley will talk about that, but it's, oh, it's, it's over. It's too far into leaf season for us to expect to get a machine in time uh to actually be effective for this leaf season. So I just want to clarify in case anybody's watching and worried that their leaves are not gonna still get picked up. That is, it's not over, okay? Okay, to be clear, with, with that. Are there any questions from my board colleagues?
No.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, thanks. Alright, so we'll go to uh the, the changes to the fee schedule.
Okay, so first in my little file here, I have uh the Dale Cemetery fees, which we did share with the board um in advance of this meeting. Um, there's these fees for some of the various grave prices and um. Items that happen at the cemetery and then also just gonna scroll quickly to the changes to the charges for the foundations. Um, so Pete, I don't know if you want to highlight anything or if the board has questions, um now that they've had a chance to review um the proposed fees for twenty twenty-two.
Sure. Hi, everybody. Um, yeah, our last um fee schedule. Uh, increase was like two and a half years ago, so just trying to uh, you know, not fall behind. Um, comparatively, uh, we're, there's a lot of different, uh, you know, factors at different uh cemeteries. But we're generally within hundreds of dollars uh with local cemeteries and cemeteries our size. So, um, you know, uh. So I just wanted to bring that to the board's attention. I, I think maybe it's time that, you know, we should increase our fees. The foundation fees that uh Victoria showed you on the uh, the other sheet, that's been like. Probably ten years, um, so I feel that uh needs to be increased. Uh, these are the concrete foundations that we put down before the monument company comes in and sets the monument. So uh, it's labor intensive, uh, you know, the guys go out and they dig it, uh. Wherever they can with the excavator and then um. Uh Mario and his guys, when we have a lot of them ready, they'll come and will uh, you know, with a uh cement mixer. Um, we're poor like twenty of them at a time, so, but uh these haven't been increased in about um ten years. So I feel it's time that uh they need a little bumping up, so um. Not much has changed on it, um. Uh, many times people ask us for uh grave markers, so I added that to the uh list. Um, that's gonna be fifty dollars. Uh, there is no headstone there and they, you know, they're coming up over the weekend and they can't find their. Family or loved ones uh graves to work out and uh we'll put a temporary marker. I don't know, this must have been an original one. I believe that's gonna be fifty dollars now, Victoria. Yeah, uh, so, but um, outside of that, um. You know, the guys, they get the four hours call in, so uh, uh, that's why we get the six fifty on a Saturday by eleven thirty. So, uh, you know, to try to cover some of their uh time and a half fees. One of the, one of the newer items is flower arrangement disposals. I'm working on that. Um, we accept ten flower pieces or arrangements at the grave site, which is very generous. Uh, but a lot of times they come with. But a lot of times they come with flower cars and, you know, out of the city and they don't want to bring the pieces back and so I'm looking to, you know, get some kind of dumpster and charge $75 for that removal. So that will probably sometime, you know, early next year. So work permit fees, headstone cleaning and planting, these are by outside contractors, not, not plot owners. So if you come in and work in our cemetery, you know, you have to pay a $75 fee. And if you like to use the water spigots that are seasonal to clean the headstones, we're charging $25 for that. That's that's a new item also.
Any questions? And, you know, I said it's budget adjacent because obviously the goal here is to try to adjust our revenue lines in the future. We didn't make any changes to the 2022 budget revenue line since these are, you know, new fees going into effect next year. So we're gonna see how everything shakes out, but you know, hopefully this will help make sure our revenue lines in the cemetery remain robust and responsive to our changes in expenses.
I have a question. Can we compost the flowers instead of getting a dumpster for them?
Most of them, Liz, are fake. The ones I'm thinking of and they come on a big styroform, styrofoam board. Yeah, and it's, so the ones that are, you know, that, that were real, yes, once they turn brown, we could, you know, make a little area for that, yes, but most of the time that's what they are. And that's why the removal is, you know, a real pain and like to get the dumpster and just take care of that for that, just separately for that.
And just again, I think you said at the beginning, Pete, you were looking around and you just want to make sure that we're competitive and not, not too high, not too low. So by adjusting the fees that we're keeping up with the, the area.
Yeah, I mean locally, yeah, we were, I'm sorry, we were behind in it, in some pricing and we were above in some pricing. I think the further south you go in, in the county, you know, graves can start at five, $7,000. So I, you know, for, for us, I think we're very fair with, with the increase that, you know, we're proposing. But we are within cemeteries our side, our size and neighboring, neighboring cemetery. So and this will keep us, you know, good for a couple of years at least anyway.
Does the water charge include a hose that reaches to their site?
You know what? That, that is usually for monument cleaning that again, it's, it's not for plot, plot owners that it's on all the time and they can bring a watering can or a bucket. It's for outside contractors that would, you know, work in the cemetery and clean or getting paid for it. And so we're gonna charge for, you know, using our stuff.
Okay.
Sounds good to me. Any other comments or questions from town board? And thanks for all the work doing the research and coming up with the recommendations. We appreciate it and we appreciate keeping up with, with the world of cemeteries. We are in the business.
So now moving to our parks. So we have a couple of new items that have come online in the past year is Mario just shared with us. And so we have a recreation superintendent, Bill Garrison, who proposed some fees for some of those new items. So Bill, if you want to explain some of these.
Sure. Thanks, Victoria. Good evening, everyone. So yeah, Mario's presentation was great with all the work that they've been doing and the three areas that I'm proposing some fees for some of the things that he showed in there. One is the, the kayak storage at Lewis Angle Park. Historically, that's been, the racks down there have been free to use. So we're looking to develop a program which would be like a membership program to charge a fee to store the kayaks there. Did a little bit of research around looking at the different prices that other municipalities are charging and have a proposed fee of $175 for year round storage. Just to give you a little bit of perspective, Croton's charging 275, Terry Town is 170, Dobbs Ferry is 200 and Irvington was 350. We would run this program through our community pass so it can be done online. Basically, we would have the racks numbered and the spots numbered. Once person paid their membership fee, they would get that number. The community pass will automatically remind them when their membership is up. We will have that probably about four weeks in advance and they could renew it online or we would monitor that and then inform the people that they would need to remove their kayak.
And just how is it, how are they locked up and monitored and stuff like that besides?
Right. So everything is gonna be, is gonna be on the person to secure their own kayak. I think we probably would need some sort of document from legal counsel regarding some sort of waiver that the person would sign. So they're assuming all risk and that the, the town would not be liable for any loss there.
Is that how the other communities do it as well?
They do.
Okay. Uh, any questions?
Does the community pass that go to the town or into the rec department? Does the fees come to the town or to the rec?
It would be coded, so it'll come into the town.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, they just have to sign off that. They understand the risks. But really, logistically, people's kayaks have been down there for years and really nothing's happened to them. So.
Right. And the, the difference too is that we don't know who's there now. So with the community pass and registration, we would have the contact information to get a hold of folks.
Will there be spot numbers?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Weren't the, are there, are there ones down there now? I seem to think that like as soon as they put the racks up, people just started throwing their kayaks on there.
Yep. Yeah, people started securing their, their boats right to the rack already. So we have, we took pictures of all of them. So once we, over the winter, we will start putting this out on social media, letting, you know, once this is approved, letting people know that there is now going to be a fee. And that people need to, to pay the fee or they need to remove their boats. And we'll give them time to do that. And then at some point, if people have not contacted us, we'll have to remove the boats and store them someplace where people could come claim them.
Okay. Sounds like a plan. Okay, so unless anybody else has any questions, I can't see all the board members. So if anybody else has any questions, say something.
Okay, so the next item is the, the Muga rental. So the Muga is the multi-unit gaming area that's at Gerlach Park. There has been some interest of, of people wanting to rent that to do soccer. So I'm just proposing a $25 an hour fee for that rental. That's consistent with what a field rental is. Again, we would run this through community pass, just like we do all the other facilities for pavilion picnic area and ball field rentals.
Do you anticipate that being a problem for people who just want to come down and play soccer with their families?
I don't know if it's gonna be a problem. I think we, we'll have to put some, definitely some signage up, letting people know that the Muga is available for rent. And that people with permits have priority for usage of the, of the Muga.
I think it's gonna be.
Maybe we could have some, the school fields. That's the same thing that they have for the school fields too. Okay, are there specific hours that are kind of like, you know, open swim, like everybody can be guaranteed that on Tuesday at four o'clock, it's always gonna be available to everybody or it can be rented at any time if you show up, oh well.
Yeah.
Yeah, it, it can be rented at any time. It will be, the, the public, all of our, all of our facilities have a public calendar. So people can go on and look and see if it is available online.
It's just not rented, then theoretically somebody could do, have a pickup game there. And we're not charging for pickup game, like a pickup game. And when I say that, I mean like a few people or family versus like an organized game where you have referees and umpires and whichever it is.
Correct.
Well, and I also, you know, this is obviously a new facility for the town. So after a couple of months or after a season and it seems to be a problem that it's being rented all the time. You know, this is something that the town board could certainly revisit. You know, it's easy for the fee schedule to be changed. It just needs to be changed by resolution. So if it becomes an issue, the board could always revisit that after a season or so.
Okay, I just want to make sure there was also time for families, but I'm sure it won't get rented all the time.
And again, I live across the street from very popular soccer field. And I see that it's a mix. You know, there's a lot of times that it's being used by organized teams and, you know, certainly by leagues, but not all the time. And there's really, there's plenty of time on the weekend for pickup games and, and things like that. So, you know, I, I have a feeling that's gonna be okay and we'll just kind of work itself out. That's, that's just my gut. I, I don't know for sure, but that's, that's my gut. We'll see. As Victoria said, you know, we, we'll play by ear. If we have to change it, we will change it. But I think it's a good, it's a good starting point. And it was basically, we basically, you know, built it with that intention. That was how it was originally discussed. So.
Okay. There's no questions. I'll just move on to the, the last item. Last location is the Ryder Park tennis and pickleball permit. So in the village, we have a tennis permit which allows people to play tennis at the, for clay courts at Nelson Park. That annual tennis fee permit is $75. Proposing a fee of $40 for Ryder Park. This, because of the pickleball courts there, this will probably be of interest of folks. We have pickleball available in the gym, but during the summer months, especially during July and August, when we have summer camp, the pickleball opportunities in the gym are drastically reduced. So people will do, will move outside. And I know that the pickleball courts, once they were, that court was redone this year, it got a lot of use from pickleball players and talking to them, they, they thought it was a, a great opportunity. So it's something to consider. I have a proposed fee of $40, which is kind of in proportion to the fee from the village of the four courts there. We would allow, we, we run the permits through community passes, like we do currently for the village. It also offers an opportunity for people to make reservations through community pass. So if you are a permit holder, you can go on and make reservations. That's something that we might want to consider here for these courts as well.
Any thoughts from the town board?
Guess I'd see how it goes with that one. We have a lot of people on there playing tennis. I mean, I know there's a group that really rallied to, to keep it and fix it up. So I'm sure there are some people playing.
Yeah, we don't have a lot of people using the, the tennis court since it was fixed up and it was fixed up late in the season. So I know there's people out there frequently playing tennis. So I'm guessing that $40 would be pretty reasonable for the season. And, and then they would be able to, to, like you said, to reserve it, right?
Right.
An hour or something like that. Yeah.
Yeah, we can, I forget what we do. The, I believe it's an hour and 15 minutes for the courts at Nelson.
Okay, is that like a rolling reservation? You can have one or two reservations on the books at a time and then as you use them, you make another or you can reserve every day if you want.
You, I mean, we can set it up how you want to do that, but yeah, you can go ahead and make reservations every day. What tends to happen is that we, with this, we need, you know, anytime you start doing this, it creates another issue, a problem of, of kind of maintaining and enforcing what's going on. So what we have at Nelson Park is a, a combination lock. So all the members get the code for that combination lock. So the court remains locked all the time. It, you know, it's easy just to give that combination out to somebody who doesn't have a permit. So sometimes, you know, as far as enforcement, we probably need to do some spot checks and just, you know, make sure that people have the memberships to be on there. And then also you don't want somebody who is, you know, reserving every night at seven o'clock during the summer, but never showing up. So we, we kind of want to monitor that too. So if people are making reservations, we want to monitor that they are showing up when they, they need to be.
Okay, and then there's room for other people if they want to reserve as well.
Right. And then, you know, the, the, kind of the rule that people know is, you know, if somebody shows, if you're on a court, somebody shows up, you, you show them that you have the permit and people understand that they need to, to move off that court. So if I show up at six o'clock and there's a reservation, but that reservation number shows up, I'm not gonna know that anyway. So I'm gonna be able to use the court.
Makes sense.
And I assume we have some overlap in the tennis community of Austin, of people who are familiar with the system at Nelson Park and would apply the same at Ryder Park. I can't imagine we have, you know, there's probably a lot of overlap.
Right.
And the pickleball too.
And, and the pickleball too, that's gonna be the big thing, I think. I mean, I did think about like having one permit for kind of all the courts, but then you wouldn't be able to separate revenue between the village and town courts.
Right.
So this is, this is the only way that you can really keep it separate is have, you know, the Ryder permit and then the Nelson Park permit.
Okay.
Okay, it makes sense.
Anybody else on the town board want to weigh in? Councilwoman Shaw, you've been very silent on all of these recreation related topics.
Things look good. I mean, I, I, I know people that play at Nelson who wanted to play at Ryder and they've been playing at Ryder and they're happy. So I mean, things are moving along. So this is good news.
Awesome. Great. Glad to hear it. Okay. So any, if not, if we have nothing else to discuss, then I would say thank you to Bill Garrison. And looks good. And we appreciate you taking the time to put this, these recommendations together. And I think the next step will probably be to start thinking about signage that we need so that people know about it and, and social media messaging and, and other types and, you know, messaging so that we can let people know about it. We would be adopting these again, I believe, at the reorg meeting in January. Is that right, Victoria? Just one more time. Yes. Okay, which is the second, our second meeting in January. So, you know, hopefully we can get everything installed. As long as, you know, Sally Swat Park is done, then we can start putting signs up elsewhere.
Okay.
Okay. And awesome. Okay. So thanks again, Bill. Have a great holiday. We'll see you. Some of us will see you before that, between now and then. And I think that's it. Unless you, is there anything else that you want to add?
No, I'm all good. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. You too. All right. So with that, next up, we have our wonderful assessor, Fernando Gonzalez, who's here for his departmental report and he's been extremely patient. So we're grateful. Zooming in from Catskills.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for the introduction. I just wanted to give you an update and discuss with you the 2021 assessment roll, which was finalized on September 15. And also discuss with you the administrator's review by the Board of Assessment Review and then the, the recent filings for new judicial review. Small claims for residentials and certiorari for commercial. So with that, Victoria, I'd like to go to the, to the totals.
Um, roll totals. This?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So this is the, the total, the assessment, the assessors report totals that is submitted to the state. Once we finalize the assessment. once we finalize the assessment role in in September fifteen as required by law. Of course, the total taxable that you're dealing with for your budget is slightly different because of course the 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 assessment role is in constant motion with properties selling and court cases being settled. So the total tax number that you are using for budget is slightly different. Nonetheless, the the results of the twenty twenty-one assessment role, it's important to highlight, this this report shows the the difference from prior role to the current role. And it's important to highlight that on the residential end, the difference is thirty-eight. This is the, by the way, this is, if you look up on the upper left-hand side, this is the town general totals, which shows that the residential section, which is the two-hundred-class property, had an increase of about thirty-eight million dollars in assessed value. On the commercial portion, about a seven-point-five-million increase. And as you can see on the industrial section, which are the seven-hundred-class property of which we only have seven parcels. There was a reduction of a million eight forty-two. And then if you look, if you go down, the highlighted in yellow total shows an increase in assessed value of forty-seven million dollars. Again, this is by property class, but then if you go to the lower part, then we look at the at the important, the most important sector is the taxable assessed value. As you can see, on the taxable assessed value, Roll Section One, we had an increase of twenty-six million, almost twenty-seven million. State-owned land, we had a reduction in value of about a million three hundred. As a reminder, state-owned land, the state only pays taxes on state-owned land for the school to the school district only. The state does not pay taxes to any of the other taxing jurisdiction. Special franchise, which is your cable system, and we had an increase of about two million. And utilities, which is your Connet's, we had a decrease of about a million four. On both of those cases, the state providers provides us the values for these properties. And then if you look at the Holy Exempt, we had an increase of twenty-one million in Holy Exempt. And the reason for that is because the the former Pace Campus sold recently, and it went to an exempt institution. So right there is about seventeen million dollars worth of of taxable assessed value that came of the roll and went into the exempt area. Again, this is the look for town general. And then if we go to the next page, we'll go to the, we'll see the results of the twenty twenty-one role. In this case, this is for the town outside villages, which shows, again, the important area shows a twenty-one million four-hundred-thousand increase in assessed value. But when you look down at the second portion of the report, we show an eighteen-point-two-million increase in taxable assessed value, Roll Section One, and about a two-million-three-hundred-sixty-nine-thousand increase in the Holy Exempt. Part of the reason for that is the 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 new children exempt facility on North State Road. Again, let me remind you that the twenty twenty-one assessment role, as I had mentioned before, had had a the results were, of course, what we were not expecting with the with the COVID emergency, but the many of the residential parcels saw an increase in value because of the demand, and more so in the more affordable neighborhoods. If we move on to the next, which I believe is the Village of Austin. And as you can see, the Village of Austin in as I mentioned, the lower-valued homes in the Village of Austin saw a bigger increase in market value because of the demand. The more affordable the property, the higher the increase in value. As you know, there was, they still very little inventory and and properties start selling for numbers that are unbelievable. So the village overall saw a forty-nine, almost a fifty-million increase in assessed value. Most of it is attributed to the residential portion. Of which about forty-four million was an increase in taxable value. Again, most of it is because the lower-valued neighborhoods in the village saw a larger increase in assessed value in market value and therefore assessed value than the higher-value properties. Again, if you see, if you look at the Holy Exempt also in the village, saw an increase of seven million dollars, and that's because of the the Children's Center on the new building that was recently completed. Again, state-owned land, a small increase, which and the utilities also saw a decrease of about a point-six million. If we go to Bradley Manor, as I was mentioning, contrary to what happened in the village, the the village of Bradley Manor saw a decrease in assessed value. Part of that, many of the higher-end homes for twenty twenty-one did not see the increase, or they were not, the sales did not, on the residential portion, did not, the sales did not increase. As you can see there, that the two-hundred, two-hundred-class residential saw a decrease of about a million five. And you saw a decrease on the commercial of about eleven, eleven million. The reason for that decrease on the commercial, of course, is the decrease in the Gulf properties and also a decrease in the value of the club, the Bradley Club, which is the the new senior living that was recently built and is having issues having delayed occupancy issues. So overall, the Village of Bradley Manor on the twenty twenty-one role saw a decrease of about thirty-five million dollars in taxable assessed value. And again, most, most of it is because of the decrease in some of the commercial assets, like the club, the Gulf, the Gulf properties, well, the Trump property we lowered, but not the the Sleepy Hollow Country Club. And again, you see, again, on on the Holy and Holy Exempt column, you see an increase of about twelve million in Holy Exempt. And again, that's because the former Pace Campus became Holy Exempt again. The new, the new religious organization that bought it, it's the property is now back in the in the exempt of of the tax row, of of the taxable column. In Bradley Manor, we did not see a large increase in the residential values again, because the market during the COVID was more in the affordable, in the affordable columns. We did see an increase in all the condos, of course, townwide, but the condos, remember, are in the four-hundred-class commercial, commercial values. You see, you still see an eleven-million reduction in the four-hundred-class there, and that is because the the the, some of the other commercial sector, like the, like the, like the assisted living facilities are in the four-hundred class. Any questions so far on these totals? It's great to see increases in taxable values year after year. I will not be as popular when the market turns around, goes the other way, and we have to deal with decreases in taxable value. This year, or for next year's budget, the Village of Bradley Manor will have to deal with with this decrease in taxable assessed value, which of course is going to impact the the tax rate.
I just think it's so interesting to, you know, to see that the higher-priced properties are the ones that are, you know, not necessarily in high demand. So, you know, really seeing, seeing that impact in a big way to the total role, which is just interesting how that all, you know, balances out, I guess, and it's
Yeah, well, you you know, that is the importance of doing every assessment every year. Because if we were not doing every assessment every year, what happens with an equalization rate that applies to everybody? You know, we would have seen probably a one or a two percent increase townwide, meaning applied to everybody, which means that that properties that should have, should have, that properties that decrease in value, like the commercials, retail and office, are going, are going to still see an increase because, you know, you're not, you're not, you're not revaluing based on, based on market. You are applying this equalization rate that that really doesn't apply to most of your role. So you're creating inequities, and year after year, you're creating inequities. And typically, what happens is that, that the 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 lower-priced homes or the lower-priced properties are the one that suffer the most, are the ones that end up being over-assessed and paying more than their fair amount of taxes. So, so again, this illustrates the importance of being able to to adjust the role by neighborhood, by commercial class, so that you you have a value, an assessed value that is more reflect, that reflects best the market values.
So how come the childcare place on North State Road is, aren't they a for-profit business?
I was confused about that, too. I didn't know they were not
Yeah, I think I I believe it is. I have to, I have to double-check which, why my my town outside exempt.
Because of the SPCA? The SPCA was increased in value following their renovation? Could that be the increase? That's also on North State Road.
Yeah. Yeah, I believe it could be that one, yes. Or a combination of several. I mean, it's only one, what did I say, one-point-five million?
Am I there? Yes.
Holy Exempt, two-point-three million. Yeah. It could be several, it could be several properties, you know, not only, not, not only one big one.
Okay, so with the, you know, hopefully the salt tax deduction being increased, most likely the Bradley properties will go back up as they're become, they'll be more desirable as their taxes are actually deductible again, hopefully.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's a good possibility. I think it will, it will, it will have an impact. However, ba- based on the preliminary review of what, you know, preparing for next year's role, the even the high-end properties have, are showing a, an increase in my view. So for twenty twenty-two, for twenty twenty-two.
Without the, the soft deduction increase.
Okay, well, yeah, I guess the pandemic, you know, pricing got there.
Remember that the valuation day for the twenty twenty-one role was July, July first of twenty twenty. So, you know, only, only, not, 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 it was only the beginning of the pandemic that we're measuring. You know, we're measuring, we will be measuring more of the pandemic, this pandemic market now in the twenty twenty-two role.
Okay, so we can expect the smaller houses to go even much higher and
Yes. It's crazy. I mean, houses are selling for, houses are selling, particularly the the smaller houses and the small multifamily houses are selling for unbelievable numbers, you know.
Yeah. Great. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Are there questions from the town board? Are you done, Fernando? Yeah.
No, I wanted the the next document there. I just wanted to give you a a summary of what happens during the administrative review. Statistics that I keep in order to measure how we're doing when it comes to grievances. So as you know, after we filed the role on June first, people have the ability to file a grievance, which is the the first step in seeking a a review of their assessment. The first step is by the Board of Assessment Review, the administrative review process. And in twenty twenty-one, we had three-hundred-and-sixty-five grievances filed, which is about twenty-one percent less, I'm sorry. I don't see the last column there.
Twenty-two percent.
Twenty-two percent less than twenty twenty, when we had four-hundred-and-sixty-seven. Out of those, one-hundred-and-sixty-five were in the Village of Austin, which is twenty-one less than the prior year. One-hundred-and-twenty-one in the Village of Bradley Manor, which is fifty-six less than the prior year. And in the town outside, we had seventy-nine, which is twenty-five grievances less than the prior year. So the board reviews this, the the Board of Assessment Review reviews all of these grievances and makes a decision. We make the changes that the board has given us, and then we file the final role on September fifteen. And they have thirty days in which to file a small claims. If you own a residential and it's your primary residence, or Article seven certiorari, if it's a commercial property or investment property, where you, where, if it's a residential investment property. So for twenty twenty-one, we had a total of two-hundred-and-fifty-seven scars filed, that's seventeen less than the prior year. Of those, one-hundred-and-four were in the Village of Austin, which is five less than the prior year. Ninety-five in the Village of Bradley Manor, which is fourteen less than the prior year, and fifty-eight in the town outside, which is two less than the prior year. When it comes to cert, Article seven cert, we had one-hundred-and-twenty-one, which is one more than the prior year. Now, as you know, the certs are on commercial properties. And, you know, one of the reasons you say, why, how come your certs didn't go down? Well, this past year, because of the COVID situation, the court has been working remotely and not many cases were resolved. And and many of the businesses, because of the COVID, just filed, you know. But of course, you know, we only had one more than the prior year. I would have liked to see a similar reduction as we experienced with the scars or the same percentage reduction as we experienced with the overall grievances. But of those one-hundred-and-twenty-one certs, sixty were in the Village of Austin, nine more than the prior year, thirty-five in the Village of Bradley Manor, five less than the prior year, and twenty-six in the town outside, or three less than the prior year. So I take all of these new certioraries, and I clean the file, the cases that we resolved as of the cases that we resolved last last year. And again, we didn't resolve as many cases. And I add them to the total. So our total active search as of um last month was five hundred and forty, which is seventy more than I reported last year. Now bear in mind that one case is one parcel, one year. Uh so the uh each parcel, whether it's vacant land or or not, is one case. So we have five hundred and forty total cases, of which two hundred and seventy eight are in the village of Austin, or fifty four more than what we had at the end of last year. One hundred and sixty five are in the village of Bradley Manor, which is six more. And ninety seven are in the town outside, which is ten more. Uh of those, five hundred and forty are in the school, in the Austin School District. And one thirty four in the Bradley School, Bradley School District. So uh again, the important thing to notice about these cert cases is that the and you will see when we go on executive session, when I discuss the cases that I'm going to present to you tonight, that 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 many of the settlements ask for a lot less than what we used to have to deal with prior to the reassessment, because the values are that much tighter and they have much less to to fight for. But nonetheless, um um you know, we have a, in Westchester County, a lot of law firms that specializes in this field and they file cases whether whether there is uh without having the necessity to to make a judgment whether there is a case or not. And then once they have four or five years accumulated, uh we enter, you know, the court basically forces us to to uh come to a resolution. And that's where, that's where we are, we are at. Any questions on this?
Just hope that we're, we see the numbers trending down in the other direction uh soon. And again, um this, you know, could be, like you said, because of all of the shifting that's happening, I think, you know, most recently because of the pandemic. And also sometimes, you know, people not necessarily understanding what you're ha- when, when the role happens, when, and just, you know, not being happy about changes that they're seeing.
Yeah.
So uh are there any other questions or comments from town board? Again, I think we're grateful for um keeping up with and Fernando, thanks for pointing out, you know, the help that having reassessment and keeping up a hundred um percent uh value, you know, to fill market value with the role has been helpful in so many ways. Um I know we've, we have our uh town prosecutor on, uh Steve Do, and he's mentioned a number of times that he believes that that's been extremely helpful in our tax cert cases. And um I don't know if you want to say anything, Steve, since you're on, if you wanted to make a comment. I'll invite you, if you'd like to say anything, put you on the spot. Did you say no?
Uh are you there?
Yes, you're there.
Hey, good evening, everybody. Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Holidays, everyone. The one thing too, and I and I agree, as Fernando just said, a lot of our certs have been the commercials. And by reassessing every year, reevaluating, that's how we're able to kind of move on those commercial properties, whereas the residentials, uh they are residentials are what the residentials are. So we're seeing it in the courts, we're seeing it in our settlements, as we'll discuss in executive session, that your choice back in two thousand sixteen to move to an annual reappraisal has benefited the town uh from my limited experience so far with you.
Thank you.
Another, another neat point too would be that when I do closings, whenever I have a new client, a new house, I always remind them that they have the option to, option to challenge it. And I'm wondering if all those new homes that were sold in the past year, year and a half, if that may, I don't know if it is, but it might be a reason for the increase. And you see the residentials as uh uh we pointed out in the residential, something like sixty plus or ninety plus in the village of Austin alone. Those might be first time home buyers actually challenging the roles because they don't know if the previous owner ever did. So I don't know if that has something to do with the COVID and what have you, but just a thought, but a lot of movement with houses in the area. And it could be for top buyers picking up on the appraisal and the scars.
Steve, Steve, the on the residential and uh the scars, by the way, we have settled most of them by now.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll take care of that. We have settled that we only have a very few cases that that the reps haven't responded. And we contacted the courts and scheduled court dates in order to put pressure on them to come to the table and settle. We settle most of the scar, which, by the way, they withdraw more than fifty percent because they have no case.
Right.
But most of the residential homes that have been sold right now are be, are being sold at above assessed value. So, you know, they really have no case when it comes to, when it comes to filing a grievance and eventually a small claim since market value is market value. And if they paid if they paid, you know, for example, five hundred thousand, how could, and he's assessed for four seventy, you know, it doesn't make sense for them to come to come to the courts to claim that the house is worth than what they paid for. So, so uh but we still do have some that do play that game, you know, believe it or not, they pay, they pay a certain amount, and then they come to the Board of Assessment Rio saying, well, I overpaid, you know. Uh I didn't know that I had to do this, do that, and the other thing. But the market value is market value, as long as it's an arms-length sales transaction, so.
I was gonna say, how can they challenge it if they paid X for the house and X is with, do you change the assessment on the houses that sell um for what they bought it for? Or does it stay where you were?
No, no, we review. That's, that's why we re- we reassess every year. So, you know, the process is to review all the, all of the sales and make adjustments to the entire population based on sales analysis. So for example, you know, some of the neighborhoods in in the village of Austin, like Indian Village, has seen increases every year, anywhere from two to seven percent in the last few years, because every year, the sales shows us that the values are increasing. So, so of course, that's, that's, all of this is based on markets, market sales, you know, it's uh based on ratio analysis of the sales. And uh we apply those uh those percentages uh to the entire neighborhood. It doesn't necessarily, it may or may not necessarily bring to exactly the sales price. But many times when we see a large discrepancy in the sales price to the assessment is because they have improvements that we have no record of. So a lot of people that, and we always have that, those discussions with prospective buyers and realtors is, you know, the house is be, is selling for six hundred thousand and we have it assessed at four hundred. And they say, are the taxes gonna go up? Yes, the answer is yes. The taxes are gonna go up because the assessment is gonna go up. Uh and most of the reason is because the improvements were done without a permit, and now we're catching up. You know, the additional bathroom, the finished basement, the, you know, the remodeling of kitchens, et cetera, et cetera. So so when you see those, when we have such large discrepancy is because, again, the inventory in our record is not updated, because many times the work was done without a permit. But once they sell, they have to legalize all those issues. And of course, you know, the uh the marketing documentation shows that, you know, the the property is updated, you know, new kitchens, new bathroom, finished basements, et cetera, so.
Okay. Okay. Are we good, you guys? With questions? Okay, thank you so much. Um I think we're good unless anybody else on the town board has any other questions. Uh I would ask for a motion to go into executive session for advice of counsel.
So moved.
All vote in favor?
Hi.
Anybody opposed? Thank you so much for joining us tonight. We will be back next week for a legislative session on Tuesday, December fourteenth. Have a great week. And of course, besides giving to those in need, which we talked about earlier in the meeting, please remember to shop local when buying for friends and family. Shopping small is where it's at. Have a great night and a great week, everybody. We'll see you soon.